All right, I got time.
We got 7 o'clock. Let's get this show going.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 21, 2020 meeting of the Farmington Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm the Chair of the Board, Carrie Callahan. John Schoenhorn is the Secretary. And Mr. Secretary, would you please read the notice for the record?
I'm sorry, can I do a roll call first, please, to make sure?
Sure. I was gonna do that after the reading of the notice, but skipped ahead.
Okay. Carrie Callahan?
Here.
John Carrier?
Here.
Ron Llewellyn? Ron Llewellyn? No. Sarah Nadeem?
Hello?
Yeah.
Sarah Nadeem? I don't know. Ron, was that you? I don't think that was Ron.
Sorry, Shannon, that was me, Dave Whitney.
Okay, hi, Dave, we can hear you. We're just doing roll call to get the meeting started. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. Rob Phillips is having a bit of a computer issue and should be on shortly. But he is not on currently.
So with the regular members, we've got Callahan, Carrier, Nadeem.
And John Schoenhorn?
Here.
Thank you. Brockelman?
Yes, here.
Thank you. Harry Marsh? Nope. Steve Walsh?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, so technically, right now, we have two absences. I'll check my phone, I don't think. All right, so we will have John Brockelman and Steve Walsh. You will be participating and voting as it stands right now. Okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Now that we have roll call.
Thank you.
I will open the meeting and ask the Secretary to read the legal notice, please.
Yes. Notice is hereby given that the zoning board of appeals will be, will hold an online public hearing on Monday, September 21, 2020, at 7:00 PM on the following applications. Amy Blades' application for variance to reduce side setback, side yard setback from 15 feet to 7 feet for addition to rear of house located at 36 Red Coat Lane, R30 Open Space Zone. John Pensa, application for a variance to reduce front yard setback from 50 feet to 25 feet for location of new house at 7 Tane Mountain Road, R40 Zone. Neeraaj and Jennifer Gupta, application for variances to locate detached garage in other-than-required yard at 70 Wood Pond Road, R20 Zone. For the record, should I read the notice regarding Plant 17 LLC as well? Inquiry.
No, that has been removed from the agenda. Thank you.
At this hearing, interested persons may be heard. A copy of this proposal is online at HTTPS colon double backslash WWW dot Farmington hyphen CT dot org backslash government backslash zoning hyphen board hyphen of hyphen appeals, or by calling the planning development, the planning department at Farmington Town Hall at 860-675-2325, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, September 3, 2020. Farmington Zoning Board of Appeals, Carrie Callahan, Chairman.
I'd like to confirm, Rob Phillips, are you on? Rob Phillips, I can see you, you have to unmute yourself.
I'm here.
Thank you. Okay, so we can alternate with the...
We'll alternate Brockelman and Walsh.
Walsh, yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna proceed, as we have in this age of Zoom and COVID, by addressing each individual item on the agenda, with the applicant presenting, with any opposition to the applicant being given an opportunity to speak, or to have, well, we do have written comment on one of the agenda items. And we will go through to presentations, motion, discussion, vote on each item, and close item number one out before proceeding to item number two, and closing number two before going to number three. So the first item on the agenda is Amy Blades' application for a variance to reduce the side yard setback from 15 feet to 7 feet for an addition at 36 Red Coat Lane. And Shannon, am I correct in understanding that because of the manner in which the setbacks are calculated, that is actually now a variance from 10 to 7 feet rather than 15?
Correct.
All right. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, I just want to make a point of order that I raised before we started concerning the adequacy of the notice regarding tonight's hearings. I don't believe that the notice gave either the applicants, or at least the, any of the budding property owners, or the public, the right or the ability to know how to access this online meeting. And for that reason, I'm just raising, I will leave it up to the members of the board or to the Chair to make the determination that therefore, because there is no indication on how a person might attend this meeting online, and that if one clicks on the, on the link that is in the legal notice, it only brings you to the three applications and supporting materials, that I'm not, I don't believe that the notice is adequate for tonight's hearing.
What do you propose that we do as a result? Cancel the meeting?
I am not making any suggestion, I'm asking for a ruling by the Chair regarding the adequacy of the notice, so that it at least is, is raised. I don't know if anyone else has any questions about that.
Well, here's what I think we'll do. We'll go ahead and proceed with the hearing tonight, based on my finding as the Chair, as you suggest, that the notice is adequate in that it provides anybody who wishes to participate in a public meeting with adequate information to obtain access to the meeting. I would suggest, request that the town staff consult, perhaps, Land Use Council to determine whether the, an actual link to the Zoom site needs to be provided, because I think that would provide town staff with some logistical difficulties in terms of timing, because oftentimes, the Zoom link for a meeting is not available until fairly close to the meeting date itself. So I think, to some extent, if people want to participate, they're gonna have to be a little bit more proactive in the days of Zoom.
And I'll just state for the record, I'm only raising this because one of the property owners, I was doing site inspection this weekend, and one of the neighboring property owners in the area had asked, had approached me and asked me about access and did not know how to join the meeting, and I had actually shown that individual that there was a Zoom link, which was based on what I had been sent as an invite last week, and that individual took a picture of it, and he showed me the notice that was sent to him by certified mail, it's the same as what I just read. I'll just state that for the record.
Okay, no, I understand the concern. I just don't see how it's gonna be feasible for the staff to send the applicants a notice with a Zoom link in sufficient time for the applicants to get those to all potentially agreed parties, correct? That would be a problem. Let's proceed on that basis, the concern is noted, and we can wait and see until, because I, the concern, as I take it, Commissioner Schoenhorn was raised by a neighbor on the Tane Mountain item, which is number two, on the agenda?
Well, I'm just indicating on one of the applications, I'm not, I mean, I don't think it's relevant which property it was.
No, I'm just talking about maybe we can find out if anybody who's expressed a desire to participate managed to obtain access to the meeting. But with that, let's turn to item number one, Amy Blades' application for a variance on side yard setback. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, Amy Blades, 36 Red Coat Lane. I wanted to put an addition on the existing bedroom and bathroom in my home, and the original house was constructed over the side yard line, which is why I'm here for the variance.
So where, you're planning to put the addition in line with the rest of the home? Is that, and that's the, can you provide a little more detail for us, Amy?
It would go straight back off the bedroom, and that's the side that's built over the side yard line, because that's where the existing bedroom is, so the idea is to make the existing bedroom bigger and the bathroom bigger, and to bring the washer and dryer And as you can see from the picture there, it's the shaded area, that's the proposed addition.
Okay. Carrie, we want to run through everybody to see if there's questions.
Okay, I've got the meditation.
So there's the area, so there's the, so there's the home on the corner lot, and the addition is being placed in this area here with respect to the area, and then we put, it's the same, the same orientation, here's Red Coat, here's Whispering Rod, and so it's being placed on the north property line.
Okay, so we next turn to questions, with the Chair going last?
Yes.
So we start with Carrie.
Yes, Amy, there was a notice that came through, you do have a letter from your neighbor to the north, or directly to the left, when facing the house in favor of this?
Yes, I, yes, I, because I wanted to speak with him first, to see if he was okay with it, and he did sign a letter, which I did include with the application.
Further.
Thank you, no other questions?
Ron Llewellyn is not with us this evening, Sarah?
I don't have any questions for this, thank you.
Rob?
I have no questions.
John?
I have no questions.
And I don't have any questions. How about any of the alternates? Who's on this one?
So they, all the alternates can ask, Brockelman, and so they can ask questions, it's just once you, we close the hearing to vote, then only the designated member can participate.
Brockelman has no questions.
Walsh has no questions.
Okay. So I'm gonna ask if anyone in the public has a question regarding this matter, if you can raise your hand with the, through Zoom, and I can allow you to speak then, and ask your question. I'll ask one more, any, any questions or comments regarding 36 Red Coat Lane in favor or in opposition of the proposed application? Please raise your hand through the Zoom application. I'm seeing none.
All right, in that event, we will close the hearing on item number one on this evening's agenda, and at this point, we will need a motion.
And John Brockelman is participating in this one, is that correct?
That's correct, because he's the first named alternate.
I will make the motion that, that the application of Amy Blades for variance to reduce the side yard setback from 10 feet to 7 feet for an addition to the rear of the house located at 36 Red Coat Lane, R30 Open Space Zone, be approved. I'll second it. John Carrier?
I mean, it makes sense, you know, they're, they're just expanding the existing rooms on that side, it's further away from the corner of the other road, the house was built there, you know, originally over the line, they're not expanding that, I think it makes sense.
Yeah, Rob Phillips, they're a corner lot, so they're, they're somewhat unique in their, in their layout.
And John Schoenhorn, I'm, I feel that there is a hardship articulated here, because at the time the house was built, a site plan, I guess, was not required to be approved, and therefore, when the house was built, it was built over the line, and this is just in a continuation of the same line.
Agreed.
Support of the neighbor, too.
Is there any further discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor of the motion, please so indicate by saying aye.
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 Sorry.
Well, that's fine, you can do, that's fine, because you can ask if there's any opposed or any abstentions.
Is anybody opposed?
No. Any abstentions? No.
No, motion passes unanimously.
All right. Amy, we'll be in touch in the next day or two, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, thanks for your time.
Second item on the agenda is Mr. Pensa's application for a variance to reduce the front yard setback from 50 to 25 feet from the location of a new home at 7 Tane Mountain Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you see me?
No. I don't know what I did with the video on this, I don't know that it's you, Dave, I think it might be something I did, as I was getting everything set up this evening. I'm not seeing any video.
I can see it from my end, Shannon.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I have no idea what I did, so we're not seeing any video here. And if I, I don't want to keep touching buttons, and then I'll shut the whole thing down, so. So go ahead, Dave.
Would you like me just, I can go ahead anyway, correct?
Correct, because we can see the screen, and that's really the only, that's the main purpose of this, so go, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. For the record, my name is David Whitney, I'm a professional engineer with an office in Avon, representing John Pensa from Best Built LLC, who is the applicant, and the owner of this property at number 7 Tane Mountain Road is Edit Castle, who now lives in Groton, Connecticut. I prepared a narrative, which I, I don't know if it helps, Shannon's got it up on the screen, I'd like to just briefly go through this narrative. This is an existing lot, it was created as a free split in 2016, when it was divided from the house next door, number five, that was owned by Edit's parents, Edit Castle's parents. We went through a process with Bill Warner of having him review the plan that was prepared by Hodge, and that plan is on file at the Land Records, it is also Sheet 4 in my narrative. I don't think we have to go see it, just, it shows the lot, it's an A2 survey from Hodge. We, I conducted soil tests on the lot, so it's very well-drained soil, so we received an approval memo from the Health District back in 2015, that the site can support a septic system for a three-bedroom house. It's a one-acre lot, it has 300 feet of frontage on the road, on Tane Mountain Road, and the, the challenge with this lot, the hardship, is there is a 150-foot formerly CLMP, now EverSource easement transmission right-of-way that goes through the property, it bisects the property almost in half, and encumbers over half of the land on the lot, which makes the, the building area relatively small. I had prepared a feasibility plan for Edit Castle back in 2016, and Shannon, would you be able to show page six from my narrative? Thank you. This was the feasibility plan that I had prepared in 2016 for Edit Castle, who, again, lived next door with her parents, and she wanted to build a small house, didn't need a garage, so this, this plan was satisfactory for her needs. Again, the house doesn't have a garage, but it was, for her, it was fine. And then subsequently, she has left town, and the lot is for sale, and the applicant, John Pensa from Best Build LLC, is proposing to, has a contract to buy the house, but would like to build a colonial house slightly larger than the plan you see on this screen, and that is why he has applied for a 25-foot variance of the 50-foot front building setback If we can go back, Shannon, to page two of the narrative? Okay, a lot of this data on page two is I went up and down the street and looked at all the existing houses, and the, the type of houses, and base, and there's, there's a, it's an eclectic mix, actually, of styles of houses, but the majority of the houses, or at least the, the greatest percentage of houses on Tane Mountain Road are Colonials, and that is the type of house that the applicant would like to build on this lot. On page seven, you don't have to, you don't have to go to it, Shannon, but on page seven of my narrative, I show, you know, a page showing the elevations of the house he'd like to build. So it's the applicant's opinion that the, the house he wants is, is in character with the neighborhood, and it has a garage, which is something that the market really wants. And this is, Mr. Pensa, the applicant, is a builder, so this would be a, a spec house and not, not a house for himself. So he wants to build something that will sell on the market, and feels that it's very important to have a garage, and it would be better to have a slightly larger house than the smaller house that the owner was, was previously satisfied with. If we can go to page three, Shannon, of the narrative? Okay, so, hmm, let's see, it's, it's the, the hardship, in our opinion, is the presence of this 150-foot wide right-of-way. Back when I worked for Edit Castle, the owner, to get the lot, the free split, I had to draw up the feasibility plan, we spent a lot of time dealing with CLMP to try to see if it was possible to allow some of the house, or some of the septic system, or some of the grading within the 150-foot right-of-way. At that point in time, CLMP said frankly, we don't think we'll ever use this right-of-way, there was a long process to go through to get permission to do certain activities within it, I still think that's a possibility, but at this point, I, I don't know how EverSource feels about it, so John Pensa would like to go ahead and try to build on this lot without encroaching on the easement, which, for the house he wants, that he feels is appropriate for the neighborhood, we're requesting the 25-foot variance. And frankly, what's gonna happen here, I think, is if John Pensa is not granted this variance, if it's deemed not, not, not suitable, a smaller house, he'll probably build a smaller house on the lot, it probably won't be a Colonial, and, but, you know, a house can be built on the lot without the need of a variance, but it's just very restrictive in the style and the size of the house that's able to be constructed. I mentioned in the narrative that this is a limited local street, so, you know, on busier streets, I know most towns want the houses a little farther back, but on a street like this, the, the traffic is minimal compared to most roads. And I also mentioned in the narrative that across the street from this lot, the two existing houses are a reasonable distance back, they're not on the minimum 50-foot building line, so in our opinion, this house being forward 25 feet won't, won't feel like it's on top of those people, because one of the houses is 135 feet back, and one is 150 feet back, that's number 10 and 12 Tane Mountain Road. Shannon, if you could go to page, Plan A, you had it up there before. Okay, so this is, thank you, this is the, the original site, well, the site plan that was submitted with this application, and the, the yellow line that you see is the existing setbacks, 25-foot side yard setbacks and 50-foot minimum setbacks, and the orange line is the building line if the variance was granted. You see a dimension of 26 feet here, if, if, if a 25-foot variance is granted, it's always my recommendation to put the house a foot back, just in case the foundation people, you know, aren't as precise as they, they, they can be. So the house is also, it's just the corner of the house that's actually that close to the road, and it's still 42 feet back from the edge of the pavement. And you can see that the septic system and the grading and the well, all are contained within the area outside of the 150-foot easement. Now, I know some of the neighbors are, maybe all the neighbors are concerned about this, so we, we took a look at how we might be able to wiggle this house a little bit. Shannon, if you wouldn't mind putting up a Plan B? All right, this is a sketch, thank you, this is a sketch that I prepared, just moving the house at an angle, if, 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 and the, and the applicant, John Pensa, is happy, would be happy to build the house in this orientation, this would only require a 20-foot variance of the 50-foot setback, instead of the requested 25-foot variance. So if 5 feet makes a difference, the applicant is, is willing to amend his application to request a lesser variance than was advertised. Actually, he likes this orientation better, because it's more normal, and, so, according to talking to Shannon, we would be allowed to amend our application if, if the board feels that this is better. I also included, we don't, we don't have to go through this, Shannon, or maybe we could just flip quickly, go through the, all the houses, the last six pages of my narrative. I, I took the photos and footprints from the assessor's office, and I compiled them, so you can sort of see, these are them, we could just slowly scroll through these, you can see the houses and the style of houses and the size of the houses on Tane Mountain Road. So it's, it's our opinion that the, if the variance was granted, it would allow a house to be built on this lot that is actually closer in size to the existing houses on the street, and as I mentioned before, almost half the houses are Colonials, that's the predominant style, and the proposed house would be a Colonial. But I think, now those are... But I think, now, those are... Thank you, Shannon.
You're welcome.
So I think, basically, that is the application. The applicant is requesting some relief from the front yard setback due to the hardship of the right-of-way. I also mentioned in my narrative, and you can see from the plans, that this particular lot is the lot most severely impacted by the 150-foot easement. It bifurcates this lot, whereas on most of the other lots, it's either on the front or the back of the lots and leaves more buildable area. So this is kind of a unique lot in the way that the easement goes through the property. I think at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions or whatever is next on your schedule.
Next is questions from the members of the Commission.
And for the record, we will have, Steve Walsh will be voting on this one, correct?
Correct. We agreed we would alternate.
All members can ask questions, but...
So we'll go through this in order. John?
Yes. First question's actually for Shannon. If a two-car garage is done as an accessory structure, is there a size limit and can it be done over the setback like a shed can in Farmington?
Uh, yes. So a two-car detached garage has to be behind the longest rear wall of the home. And all the, all accessory structures have to be behind the longest rear wall of the home unless they get a variance otherwise. And they are allowed up to 700 square feet. However, they can be larger with a special permit granted by the Commission. And they can be as close as five feet to the side or rear lot lines.
Thank you.
And at least 25 feet from any street line, sorry.
Okay. Can you put the site plan back up, either the newest one or even the original one?
Yeah. So this is, this is the Plan A that was part of the application. It's just the colored version.
So 25 feet from the street line, so obviously that 25-foot setback wouldn't help if we were to grant that variance. It would still have to be 25 feet. It could go rear, and I'll follow that up with a question from Dave in a minute, and it can be detached.
Right.
Okay. Dave, the grading...
From the street line, it does have to still be behind the rear wall of the home.
Okay, perfect. So that leads me right into my next question, which is for Dave. The grading seems to be, if you were to try to put something in there close up to five feet of that property line, does that grading start to get tight in there?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
But we could do it.
Okay.
There might be more foundation exposed. I believe we can get permission from Eversource eventually to do a little grading within the easement, but, you know, that's not a guaranteed thing. But we could have just more of the foundation sticking out of the ground.
Okay. Actually, that was my next question. Are you allowed to grade on the easement? Thank you, Dave.
I think you're allowed to do anything with permission.
The site plan, that is the A site plan, the reason that you have it a little bit more to the east is because of the grading? And that's why you're holding it back about 10 feet from that easement line?
Yes.
Okay. And then the...
We could slide this over. I don't mean to interrupt, but, you know, we could slide this over to, in this orientation to gain five feet too. So that's, the grading would just be tighter.
Okay.
That's why I know we can live with a 20-foot variance instead of the requested 25.
Okay. And then I'm assuming that the little rectangle in the back of the house is a doko or hatchway to access the basement?
Yes.
And could that be placed onto the side of the house, outside of the driveway, obviously? Where would the utilities be coming in? If it was placed there, would you have the proper clearances between the driveway edge to, let's say, the electrical, et cetera, and still have a hatchway coming off the corner allowing you to bring it back some more?
Hadn't really thought about that, but I imagine it would be able to be moved. So I'll say yes.
Shannon, can you bring up the B site plan, the one that has the house kind of 45 degrees? Okay. So in this case, too, it might be able to squeeze it back a little bit more as well?
Yes.
So, and obviously, I'm on a very small laptop, but I'm reading that garage to be like 22 feet by about 21 feet or something in that range?
I think the garage is 22.8 feet times 33 feet. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's 28.8 by 28.8.
Okay, so it's not overly...
33 is the overall mention, yeah.
Okay. Which is basically minimum for two-car when you take the brace wall line stuff into account. Okay, that's, no more questions?
I don't have any questions right now, thank you.
Commissioner Phillips?
Is that me, Rob Phillips?
Go ahead, Rob.
So I had one question. Getting an echo here. Was there any way of creating a first free cut in a different configuration? And if there was, is it possible to do a lot line revision?
This is Dave Whitney speaking again. No. I mean, there isn't, because we have to keep, the land with the existing house has to be a minimum size and a minimum frontage.
Anything else, Rob?
Next, John Schoenhorst.
Yes. The first question, I guess, is to Shannon. Do you have, have you, do you have the photographs I took of the, of the lot that I submitted to you over the weekend? Are they part of the record?
They are part of the record, and they were emailed to the entire Commission, and they were emailed to the applicant. Would you like me to put them? I've got to open them, but I can put them on the screen.
Could you just pull up one from the street that shows from the, I think there's one that shows the mailbox, the neighbor's mailbox down? From the street? This is the driveway, I think.
Yeah, having not been there, I don't, that already, well, yeah.
Okay. That one's, that one's good enough. So, Mr. Whitney, could you, by looking at this photograph, are you able to at least approximate where the closest portion of the house would be relative to the road? If you see, there's a, the sign is on the right there, there's some logs, but down further towards the curb there, there's a, I guess that's a real estate sign, maybe? Could you indicate where the house, how far, where it would in this picture come, the closest, within the 25 feet?
Well, it would be, it would be 42 feet from the curb of the road.
Okay.
I'm trying to see something that I can use to, maybe where Shannon has the arrow, somewhere there. I don't know. Shannon, does that look like 42 feet where you have your cursor?
I don't, without having frame or reference, it's really difficult to tell, unfortunately.
There is a stake there, it's a stake with a flag. If that's the front property line, it's 26 feet. I don't know what that stake is. It makes sense that it's the front property line.
I think it might be the neighbor's. It might be the original, where the free split took place. That may be the next-door neighbor's property lining, because I took this picture, I think, from approximately their property. I don't know.
So it's possible that it's the shared property corner, you know, the north-west corner for them and the south-east corner, and it's possibly the shared property corner.
I would say, I do drive up this road quite a bit. My brother lives on one end of this. So I would say that cluster of trees, like the front side, would be approximately that 42 feet from the curb. And that stake does make a lot of sense, looking at the site plan of being, you know, the difference between the 25 and the 42. All right. All right, thank you. So my other question is, when the, when the free split occurred a couple of years ago, was the feasibility study provided either as part of the discussion at that time? Was that feasibility plan filed with the town, or was it shown to any town officials?
Dave Whitney here. Yes, it was. We submitted it to Bill Warner, and I think Bruce Seer saw it. You know, I drew up that plan before we even contemplated, I mean, we even drew up the actual Hodge map that showed the split, because I wanted to make sure Edith Castile could fit the house on this small lot that she, you know, that fit a house that she wanted and could live with, because I knew it was a tight lot. And so, yes, that plan was submitted. It was submitted to the Farmington Valley Health District, it was submitted to Bill Warner, and it was submitted to, I think Bruce Seer reviewed it.
And as I understand, that, the feasibility plan that was provided to us, as you put it, a smaller house can be constructed on that lot that would not require a variance. Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Do you know what the 150-foot wide Eversource easement is for? Is there an underground electric line? Is that a future power line? What was, is there something already there or planned?
There is nothing there, nothing at all. And when I spoke with CLMP, it was a transmission line versus a different kind of line. And the fellow at CLMP told me that he doubted there would ever be a power line built there. But of course, it's now owned by Eversource, and I don't know if they have a different viewpoint, but I can tell you definitely that there's nothing there now.
And do you know whether that same 150-foot right-of-way continues to the north and to the south of the property so that, you know, is it something that Eversource is likely to abandon at some point or sell as a, as a right-of-way easement as opposed to maintaining it for forever?
When I talked to CLMP, we asked that question, because the owner would have loved to buy this, and CLMP says, said at that time, "We don't sell the easements ever. We allow people to do certain things within them, but we never sell them." If you look at page eight of my narrative, there's a map that shows, it's a small scale map of the neighborhood, and it shows in blue the 150-foot transmission line that goes through the neighborhood.
Right.
So that, to answer your question, does it extend in both directions from this lot, the east and west? The answer is yes.
Okay.
Hey, John, John, just quickly, John Carrier, just for frame of reference, in our business, we run across these all the time. And what David is saying is fairly accurate. I'm working on a piece now that has two of these on it. It's always the same answer. We're, you know, the likelihood of every building on it is slim to none. We have, in certain cases, been able to put detention basins, things like that, that they could sprawl over, but never a structure. Regrading is sometimes allowed as long as it doesn't prohibit further use of it, if it did that, you know, less than 1% chance. So, you know, there's, these things exist everywhere, and the likelihood of ever abandoning the easement is also slim to none.
Okay. Fair enough. I have just a couple more questions. Are there any other houses either to the north or, I guess, the Tane, Tane Mountain Road sort of curves to the, to the west there, I suppose, that are, that the homes themselves are within 25 feet or are 25, between 25 and 50 feet from the property line in the
Possibly number 21, Tane Mountain Road. I'm looking at the Town GIS map, but it's this map, but it's a larger scale, and it shows the houses, and I can't tell the distance from the map, but I guess I would say, no, none of the existing houses are right on the edge of the right-of-way.
Okay. Well, I didn't ask about the right-of, I meant within 25 to 50 feet of the frontage from the front property line so that it would be similar to the variance you're requesting here.
Oh, oh, you mean up and down the street?
Yeah.
Yes. House number 22, Tane Mountain Road, is an older house, and it's 30 feet from the front building line. It's number 22. I mentioned that on page two of my narrative. So you go a little bit up the street from this lot, on the other side of the street, house number 22 is 30 feet from the front yard setback.
Okay. And I have one last question. Several of the neighbors have submitted opposition to your proposal, and I'm wondering if, A, did you show them any of, there's two parts to this question. Did you show Plan B to any of them? And could just address their objections regarding the nature of the neighborhood, how this will affect them going up and down the street, and why they believe it does not fit within the characteristics of the immediate neighborhood?
I hesitate to speak for others. I can tell you what I think is their concern, but...
I'm asking you to address their concerns, not to explain.
Oh, not to explain them. Well, for example, in the petition that was circulated, that was signed by many of the neighbors, they said, well, I'll, "The variance is not in the best interest of the neighborhood and property owner on the street. The neighborhood has a country look on a rural cul-de-sac road. Any encroachment by reducing front yard setbacks would negatively impact the settings of the neighborhood and affect property values." Then it goes on to say, "Homeowners have already seen a significant reduction in values due to the recession that's referred to the lower their values." I don't know if I can speak to how you evaluate a house, but having a house 20 feet closer to the road, I don't know if that's a factor, but I do know when you evaluate houses, you look at the size of the house, the age of the house, the appearance of the house, the condition, the structure, so that the applicant here is building a brand-new house and thinks that the colonial look that he can build if he gets a variance would be best suited for the neighborhood. Because as I mentioned before, 48% of the houses are colonial and all the rest are various different styles. So I'm not sure that I think that this would destroy the country look of the road, but that's my opinion. And then the other, in their other bullet point in the petition, I'll read it. "The current zoning of the property is consistent with surrounding properties. Furthermore, current residents who have built their homes on Tane Mountain Road have adhered to the 50-foot setback standard set by Town of Farmington. If approved, it would set a precedent for future variances on this road." There are, by my guess, my estimate, three other lots that could be divided to create additional building lots on Tane Mountain Road. Number one, number 10, and number 34, Tane Mountain Road. In those cases, perhaps the similar situation might occur at number 10, depending on where they put the house. Because if a lot was created, a free split, the same way as happened here on number 10, this right-of-way also goes right through the middle of what would be that new lot. So I'm not sure I'm answering your question, but it's in a roundabout way, but... So I'm not sure I'm answering your question, but it's in a roundabout way, but this lot's unique, I guess, because it's the only lot that is totally cleaved in half, split in half by the by the right-of-way.
But to be clear, it's in that shape because you, and I mean, I don't mean you personally, but your client subdivided or split his larger lot and created it, isn't that right?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Commissioner Walsh.
No questions.
Circle back to me.
Brockelman can I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, John, let you out.
No questions for me there, all answered.
All right. I have a question and it is for the applicant. When the free split was done, the free split was done with the owner's knowledge of the preexistence of the 150-foot easement, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Are there?
Okay, so if I could.
Questions from the public?
Yep. So what I'm going to do is just, we received a number of written correspondence. We are not going to read them all in. I am going to show them all on the screen. They have been received, they were shared.
These were shared with the members of the commission, correct?
They were shared with members of the commission and they've been shared with the applicant as well. But this meeting is recorded, the visual is recorded, so these are being captured for the record as part of this hearing. And then we will, this is the petition that Mr. Whitney made reference to. And there's a number of pages of this, these different members of the neighborhood sign different pages and they were submitted to the Town Planning Office. So we'll scroll through these and then anyone that has called in for this application that wishes to provide comments in favor or in opposition, again, please raise your hand using the, that feature for Zoom and I will call your name and you will be, have an opportunity to speak and offer comments to the commission. And then, and I will put the site plan back up so that we have that. These are additional, so we've finished the petition and these are additional comments that. Okay, so these are all of the written comments that have received. And the site plan. I've got, someone's talking, if you can mute his phone, please. Thank you. And, okay, Mr. Corello, if you unmute yourself, you should be able to address comments to the commission.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, everyone, you know, as you know, when you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt. Sorry, I saw the process and procedures. Can you state your full name and your property address for the record and then you can proceed? Thank you.
It's Christopher David Corello at 14 Tane Mountain Road. And yeah, so as you know, when you buy a new home in a neighborhood, you're not just buying the house that's there, but, you know, you're kind of investing into the neighborhood itself. And I think the original zoning rules that were in place kind of ended up defining the style of this road and and that's very much what I bought into when I moved here in 2014. And to, you know, kind of to alter that, I do think will negatively impact that style. You know, not just having a house up here, but now even a larger house that's even closer to the road. And interestingly, while during these proceedings, I don't think I could show you my screen, but I quickly flipped over to Google Maps or like the satellite view overlooking Tane Mountain Road and the road just to the north of us, Hendrickson Lane. And interestingly, the two, if you've ever visited them, could not be more different. You look at Tane Mountain Road from satellite view and almost all you see is woods. And and that's what appealed to me, a heavily wooded area with houses that were set, you know, further back and apart. Hendrickson Lane is beautiful in its own way, but it's really large houses that are all kind of much closer to the street and things like that. So it does have an impact on the neighborhood that you invested. So for that reason, I do oppose it. I think it will change the appearance and feel of the neighborhood that I moved to. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Harry, I saw that you called in. I just moved you over to panelists. All right. Anyone else from the public? Are you, again, raise your hand? Okay, Mr. Marino. All right. If you go ahead and unmute yourself, Mr. Marino, you should be able to speak. Again, if you could, please, your full name and property address. Mr. Marino? Mike Marino, you've been unmuted if you'd like to offer comment. Mike Marino, you've been unmuted if you would like to offer comment. Is there anyone else that would like to offer comment with respect to this application? Anyone else that would like to offer a comment in favor or in opposition to this application? Please raise your hand. Mr. Marino, one more time, your microphone has been unmuted. You raised your hand. Would you like to speak if you're? Mr. Marino?
He's called three times.
Yeah, you.
He submitted written correspondence.
You did, yeah, he did submit written.
He submitted, okay, I couldn't remember the names on all the correspondence.
Yeah.
And I'll note for the record that we did invite Mr. Marino to speak either because of some issue on his end or our, I think his. We were not able to hear him, however, we are aware of his opposition because it has been submitted to the commission in writing.
Okay.
Is there anybody else who has raised their hand electronically in order to speak either in favor of or against the application?
I note, this is, this is Commissioner Schoenhorn. I just noted there was a text message from Mr. Marino that says his microphone is not working. And then he has a longer response. I don't know if it should just be read into the record.
There, okay, so it's in a Q and A, sorry, because there's a, all right. Thank you, John, for picking that up.
Right.
I didn't see it. We've been used to using the chat feature, so I'm seeing it here, so I can, my microphone is not working. I am in support of the petition opposing the setback variance that is being presented on Lot 7. I'd like to expound on some points in the petition and add a few related comments. It's my understanding that a request for a variance needs to meet a certain statutory standard for a variance. One of the standards is undue hardship. The undue hardship in this case is self-created. The owner recently subdivided this lot from his existing house, knowing full well what the setbacks are in R40 zoning. He also knew that there is 150-foot electric easement running through the property. The size and shape of the building envelope on this property was created by the owner. The applicant has a purchase agreement contingent upon this obtaining this variance. The owner or buyer should not be allowed to seek a variance under these circumstances. The hardship was self-created and resulted from the actions taken by the property owner. The application states that the electric easement bifurcates the lot. Okay. And that is all I'm seeing.
That's all I see.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Marino, for typing that in.
Okay.
And thank you, John, for catching it.
If there are no further comments from the public either in favor of or against the applicant, or the application, I'm sorry, we will close the portion of the.
Hang on. Yeah.
Shannon?
Yeah.
May I say something or is this the right time?
Oh, if you want, yeah, because the applicant, the applicant can rebut. Sorry, Dave, I'm having trouble picking up the voice. I didn't, I could hear the um, but I wasn't sure who it was that was speaking to me.
There are no further questions from the public, notice that we will close that portion of the hearing. If the applicant wished to respond.
Point of order, I noticed that Mr. Marino made additional comments that are now up on the Q and A.
Yeah, I just saw, they just came in. He's typing fast and furious. So in continuation, the hardship was self-created and resulted from the actions taken by the property owner. The application states that the electric easement bifurcates the lot and not the other adjoining properties. There's a lot across the street, the first lot on the right on the corner of Tane Mountain and River Road, that has the easement running through it as well. If this were granted for Lot 7, then it would set a precedent for this lot as well. I would ask the board to deny this application. The hardship was self-created and resulted from the actions taken by the property owner. The application states the electric easement bifurcates the lot and not the other adjoining properties. There's a lot, okay, I think we're getting repetitive, there's a lot across the street, the first lot on the right, Tane Mountain, corner of Tane Mountain and River Road, that this easement is running through it as well. If this were granted for Lot 7, then it would set a precedent for this lot as well. I'd ask the board to deny this application. Looks like it got copied in twice, but. Okay. And I got, Mr. Marino's hand is down, so I assume that we're set there. Thanks, everyone, for dealing with the technology. Okay. So at this point, then, yes, Mr. Whitney would have an opportunity to rebut and then we'll maybe do a final.
Go ahead, Mr. Whitney, then we'll.
See if anyone has any final questions and then we.
If members of the commission have any questions, members of the commission have questions, then we'll close the public hearing.
Correct.
Go ahead, Mr. Whitney.
Thank you. I just want to make it clear to the neighbors that this is an existing lot of record, so there's going to be a house here at some point, more than likely. The owner, the owner is motivated to sell it. If if the applicant can't build the house, this house that he would like to build, he may build a smaller house of a different style. So you, you know, the idea here with the variance was he would like to build a house that he believes is in closer conformity with the rest of the neighborhood. But it's not that this is a subdivision application, you know, and some of the, there's going to be a house there at some point. So the question is, by granting the variance, would it allow him to build a house of a style and a size that he thinks would be best? So I just want to make that point. That's it. Thank you.
Are there any further questions from members of the commission? And we'll do it in the same order as we did last time, beginning with John Carrier.
Yes, Shannon, can you bring up the original site plan with the original house when they did the free cut back in 2016?
So the feasibility plan?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Can you zoom in on that?
Yeah.
It looks like a dime size over here.
I understand. Yeah. How's that? Does that work? I can zoom in.
Yeah, that, that works. Okay. My, my only question, and I wanted to see that before asking it, but there's been some mention of, you know, that today's request for variance is for a 25-foot front yard setback. There's been a planned push to be 30, and I probably should know the answer to this question, but can we arbitrarily make it more restrictive during the process or do we have to approve or deny this application based on the 25 that was publicly noted?
No, the, so the applicant has offered something that is less, less restrictive or less of a lesser variance and we can approve something that is a lesser variance. I had to ask that question with respect to the first application because it was noticed as a going from 15 to seven feet. And it, with further research, realized that it was actually 10 to seven feet, so it was only a three-foot variance and not an eight-foot variance. Given the, that the applicant has proposed something as a lesser variance, then you can approve something of a lesser variance. You could not impose that on them had it not been presented.
Fair enough. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Nadeem.
I don't have any questions.
Phillips.
Rob Phillips, any questions?
I don't, I don't have any.
John Schoenhorn.
No other questions. Oh, no other questions.
Nothing from Brockelman.
No more, nothing from Walsh.
Okay. And Harry Marsh logged in, so I don't know.
I don't think he needs to be appointed.
No, he doesn't.
At this point, then, if there are no further comments or questions, the public portion of the hearing is closed. We will leave. And the motion has to be stated, as I recall from a recent meeting, the motion needs to be stated in the affirmative.
Correct.
Excuse me, I am here.
Okay. Thank you, Harry.
All right, I guess I'll make the motion and the affirmative. Let me just scroll to the, if I can find the actual notice again. I move to approve the application for variance to reduce the front yard setback from 50 to 30 feet for a new location of house 17, Tane Mountain Road, R40 zone. Commissioner Carrier.
May we have a second, please?
For purposes of discussion, I will second that motion.
That's what I was just going to suggest. Seconding the motion does not necessarily require one to vote for it. Given that we now have a motion and.
A second.
A second discussion, and I suggest we do the same order as we did with the questions.
Commissioner Carrier.
Carrier.
Yeah, I, I'm struggling with this one. I made the motion, obviously, for purposes of discussion. The reason I'm struggling with it is, is, you know, I know there was a free cut done, it was done by somebody else. This is a lot of record. On one hand, you know, we've got a lot that does have the ability to build something. That something may not be optimal, but it does have the right to do it. So this, as Mr. Whitney put at the end, a house can go here whether we grant them variance or not. It is also a lot of record that they pay taxes on, so it is, again, I always struggle with that end of it. But at the same, and I also, you know, kind of playing the, kind of the pros and cons, something were to be built here, the, pretty much the exact same amount of tree clearing and grading would be required, whether they went over the setback or not. I'm struggling it with because if it wasn't for the fact that there's one other home that. Um, I, I'm struggling it with because if it wasn't for the fact that there's one other home that actually crosses the front yard, uh, just a couple houses up and gets, you know, within, that one is within 30 feet of the street line, and I had measured it on G I S to be somewhere around 29 to 30, but sure it's not perfectly accurate, um, then I would be more apt to say no right off the bat, but because there is one, um, it's, you know, it's not like it's not uncommon on here, it does happen on a, one of the, you know, 20 homes that's there. Um, the other thing is, 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 you know, rural and, and stuff, I, I, I do appreciate the comments, but, you know, as a landowner, unless there's, uh, you know, some kind of conservation easement or whatever, not only can they build a small house on that corner, he actually has the right to clear the entire lot and not leave one tree on it. Uh, so from that standpoint, I don't know if that helps the neighbors in any which way or shape or form. So, I, I guess I'm going to hear some of the other discussion because I'm, actually don't have my mind made up at this point, I'm just trying to kind of throw the, everything that's circling around in my brain right now.
Commissioner Nadine?
So, I, yeah, I have several things going through my mind, uh, but the biggest one that's standing out to me, and the questions that were asked to Shannon, is there seem to be several other options here on how this house can be laid out, where a garage or shed-type structure can go. Obviously, wouldn't necessarily be ideal to what the homeowner or the potential buyer wants, but would be less obtrusive and wouldn't require as, um, as much of a variance. Uh, so that's sort of where my thinking is at right now. I think there's other options for this property that may not be ideal to what the potential owner wants, but that doesn't mean it's a hardship.
Commissioner Phillips?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Nadine. Uh, I believe this is a little bit of a self-created hardship, and I, I believe that, uh, building a smaller type of, more affordable type house is not necessarily a bad thing. Um, I, having said that, I think Plan B that they presented was probably a better layout, um, but I'm not quite sure.
Rob, do you have, do you have your computer and your phone going at the same time? And if so, can you completely mute your computer?
No. I'm well-versed in this, and I do not have-
Oh, yeah.
... problems. Uh, so, having said that, I, I'm still not quite sure where I, where I, uh, how I feel on this one.
Well, um, I'll state categorically that I don't see that there is a, an unusual hardship within the meaning of the statute. As I understand it, first of all, this lot was created by the current owner when he subdivided his much larger lot. There is a home downhill, I forget if that's number five, um, I don't have that, the G I S map up, um, but the, the placement of this house and the fact that there is a 150-foot wide, um, utility easement was certainly not unknown to him at the time that he, or him or her, I don't recall if the property owner is, is a man or a woman. But when this free split was done, it was specifically shown that it was feasible to build a ho, a, a house without requiring a variance. Now, here we are two years later, and, uh, the argument is, well, you really can't, well, you can build a house, but it wouldn't be a nicer, nice house for the neighborhood. We have substantial opposition in the, uh, and, and I don't see that there is a hardship that is unique or different, uh, in this neighborhood. The other concern I have is that, that Mr. Marino, um, expressed that there are other properties along this right-of-way that would maybe require the same type of variance in order to build closer to the road. Lastly, I will state that the location of the, and I'm looking at this proposal, the, uh, and Shannon, if you could put, um, Plan A back up, I'm looking at the, this is the house that meets, uh, the, the, uh, current zoning regulations. If you could put up the, the Plan A, the one that would, um, that is-
There we go.
Yeah. Um, I understand that there is a suggestion of a Plan B. No one else, to my knowledge, other than this commission, saw that plan. We haven't received any input. I note that some of the neighbors did not like the fact that it was a perpendicular to the road, that they would be looking at essentially a foundation, which leads me to my last comment. This is the, almost the highest point on this, the topography of this property, so, and Tane Mountain Road is very steep coming up around this curve, so that whether you take down one tree or 50 trees, you're going to be looking at the foundation close to the road as you come up. Now, I didn't go up to 22, um, Tane Mountain, but the right side of the road, for the most part, slopes down, not up. I'm assuming they call this Tane Mountain because it's a mountain, and this road sort of, uh, switchbacks around the, the side of the mountain as it goes higher and higher. The right side of the road, the odd-numbered lots go downhill, and the houses are set farther away, except for the one, maybe number 22, to down from the road. This goes up and therefore would be even more significant in its, uh, visibility for everyone driving up that road. So, I, I have to say that I just don't see that the, that the hardship is here. I understand that the potential buyer would like to have a bigger house on this property, but that, in my view, does not constitute the kind of hardship that's recognized under the statute. So, I'm indicating that I'm going to vote no.
Any alternate?
Uh, no, just Steve Walsh, because he's the only one designated to vote.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I, I really have nothing to add. I'm struggling, like everybody else, uh, between the two, uh, two plans. I mean, to go with Plan B would seem the simpler one to me, you wouldn't need the variance, but I'm just struggling with it.
All right. And it circles back around to me, and I'll add that it, it seems to me that a lot of the opposition here is voiced with the hope of preserving open space and woods, and that those objecting could, at some point in time, end up shooting themselves in the foot if what ends up being built is less desirable or less consistent with the neighborhood. That said, though, the thing that influences me more than anything else is that the same owner who created this lot, subject to the 150-foot easement, is now coming and saying, "Well, I, I have a hardship, and I agree with the comment that it's a self-created hardship, and coming now and saying, 'Well, in order to minimize or to eliminate the hardship that I created when I split off this lot, you should give me a variance.'" I think that creates a real problem in terms of, uh, supporting any kind of argument that there is a substantial hardship here, because the hardship is the easement, which, you know, when the lot was split off, the current owner and applicant knew that the easement was there. So, is it necessary, Shannon, to go through the, the roster again?
Well, we should for the vote. We should, um-
We should definitely roll call vote.
Yes, yes.
I just don't think it's necessary to start at the top and go all the way through-
True, if there's, no, I, I, general, if anyone else has anything else to add, it's probably fine.
All right. Now, the motion was in favor of granting the application. We will do a roll call vote on that with the chair going left. Commissioner Carrier?
Nay.
Commissioner Nadine?
Nay.
Commissioner Phillips?
Nay.
Commissioner Schoenhorst?
No.
Commissioner, alternate Walsh?
No.
Callahan, no.
Okay.
Motion fails.
All righty. Thank you.
And number three on this evening's agenda is the application of Niraj and Jennifer, is it Gupta or Gupta? Gupta, um, for variance on Wood Pond Road. May we hear in the applicant, please?
Yes, hi there, my name's Niraj Gupta, this is my wife, Jennifer Gupta. Uh, thank you guys for coming out this evening, I know it's late. Um, so, I think you-
Our address is 70 Wood Pond Road.
Oh, thanks. Uh, we're at 70 Wood Pond Road, Farmington. Um, so, we gave you a package here, and, um, what we're proposing is if we can have a two-car garage. Um, Jack Kemper and Kemper Associates did our home as well as the lot, and, um, this, you know, this garage proposal. Um, outlined, I think, in the package, the hardships we have. Our property is a spec, it's a spectacular property, um, beautiful lakefront on Woodridge Lake, so we're very happy to be here and part of the town. Um, we, the way that our lot falls, if you could see the, right now on this site plan, from the rear of the home, it pitches down, um, and then we're into wet, I think they're wetlands, we have water on all three sides of the peninsula. Uh, so, we don't have an area, um, that we can put the garage to the side or to the rear. After talking with Sandy, um, she had said, you know, it's definitely a hardship, you could try to, you know, go for this application. Um, the reasoning that we are asking for a garage or to add a two-car garage to this property, um, we've been here for less than a year. Um, I think you, uh, outlined, you saw that, um, we had listed a number of reasons why. First off was that, um, but from moving here, um, we had ended up seeing, we, we experienced, which we could not believe or, you know, that, still don't believe, is this area, believe it or not, is a very big hotspot for crime and break-ins, which, um, again, we just weren't aware. And we've had, we're now aware of four cars being stolen within houses away from our home, actually stolen. Uh, last Thursday, the, uh, our neighbors, the Dornell, the Dornellises, at 65 Wood Pond, directly across the street, they broke into their car on the driveway, then opened the house and stole a car of the garage, um, literally directly across the street from us. Um, we've had our car broken into twice. Um, we have, I have an 11 and 9-year-old, and, uh, you know, they, they're athletes, they play in the front all the time. Um, it's a beautiful setting here, so we get a ton of people that go by jogging and running. Um, the volume of the crime, it makes me feel like this is some, something organized. I've never heard of an area or, you know, you know, a small area that can have so many break-ins and what have you. So, for us, um, you know, we are, are hoping, um, that our parents, one day they're getting elderly, they might live with us. It's very, I'm Indian, it's very traditional for us to do this, to take care of our parents, and, um, they would have a vehicle. We only have a two-car garage presently, and I just don't feel safe leaving a car out on the driveway anymore, belongings out, garage doors open, and, uh, for them to be with us, they would need a vehicle. We only have two vehicles currently, and I would like that vehicle to be, you know, in a locked garage now. Um, you know, we want to, as well as, which is not showing on this plan, we were to landscape the front along, uh, Wood Pond, um, that would give us coverage as well and privacy, and hopefully some more safety and security from, you know, what's been going on. Um, but again, the hardship is that we don't have any place to put a, an accessory garage. When we redid this property, we wanted it to keep with the neighborhood feel, the historic feel, so we, we actually went over and above to renovate the colonial. It has the same look from the front, it's a beautiful property. Um, this additional two-car garage would follow suit with the neighborhood. Um, in our package, we outlined, I think, three homes that surround the lake. 40 Wood Pond is, I believe, five or six homes down from me. 52 Wood Pond is three homes down, they both have detached garages in the front. Um, 215 Chunks, this has a detached garage in the front, and there's a number of new homes or homes that are, you know, part of their accessory structures are also pretty close. Um, so ultimately, um, you know, we, we asked the neighbors, are the neighbors all agreed or were, you know, for this addition? They thought it'd be, you know, great, um, great addition to the house and to the property. So, ultimately, you know, I, I think you have most of the information, but, um, that's what we're looking to do, and again, uh, it's, for the most part, it's just so we can have another vehicle when our parents live with us, and it's, it's safe for them to keep it locked up and what have you. Um, I don't know if you guys want to comment or have any questions.
Questions begin with Commissioner Carrier.
Uh, no questions at this time.
Correct.
Um, Commissioner Nadine?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Phillips?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Schoenhorst?
Um, I have a few here. Um, the first question I have is, um, the site plan that you submitted, and, um, I would, I would say also you have a very beautiful home. I was there on Sunday, um, to do a site inspection, so, um, it, it doesn't indicate, as far as I can tell, the height of the garage. It shows the, um, I think, the midline, but what would be the peak height of that garage? I don't see a, a, um, height, elevation.
It, you know, I should have been on there. I could, I think I'm, Jen, do you know that? I might have it in an email as we're talking, sir, I could pull that up from Kemper.
All right. Well, while you're doing that, I have some other questions. I don't want to-
Yep.
-hold, hold up the commission. Is this garage, this isn't the, the top image there, the, uh, what I would call the south elevation, makes it look like it's attached to the house. There is, is not going to be attached to the house, is that correct? It's not going to be an extension to the left from the breezeway or the family room that's on the opposite side of the gar, of the current garage, correct?
No, yep, correct. It is a detached garage. I think from the front, from that south elevation, it just looked, you know, obviously, that's, lies directly behind it, um, but it is detached. I think Jack Kemper kept it off of the side lot, so it falls into the, you know, where it should be, and he wanted to, like, have a little bit of overlap, just the visual way that it would look.
Well, um, I was, I'm going to ask that, but I, I want to ask in, in order, is there going to be any plumbing, um, or heat installed in this garage? Is this self-standing garage?
Um, no, it's going to be a self-standing garage. We'll obviously have electrical in there. Um, there's no plan for plumbing or heat, um, in the garage. I mean, i, if there, I guess if there was ever heat added for any purpose, it could be a basic, like, electric, electric strip, um, you know, or, I, I don't know, like a split air system, you know, like a wall hung, but there was no plan for that, no.
Um, the, the upstairs, you said, uh, in your application, can be used for storage, but could that be converted into like an apartment?
Um, there's no intent. It's, the use will be for storage. Um, we currently don't have a, uh, do not have a shed on the property as well, and we have, like, a lot of, um, kayaks and boat stuff for friends and family, so, um, for us, we would essentially, the storage is, is needed, um, so it would be storage, essentially.
Well, no, my question is, could it be converted into an apartment?
I don't know. It's, um, as you can see, the A-frame style, so, in the middle of the room is headway, but then it gets quite narrow.
Okay, okay. And the boats and kayaks, where are they now?
Oh, we just have them on a cut, like a kayak rack, in the, you know, like a, you know, like a boat rack, you, you just rack everything up. Um, they're just in the yard right now.
Oh, okay. All right. Um, the site plan, as I look at it, the, the proposed site plan, um, it doesn't show that the front, that you're talking about, um, the property being, if we can pull down, uh, we're talking about 5 feet from the property line in the front on Wood Pond Road, is that correct? You show where the road pavement is, but the property line is 13 feet less than that. Am I correct about that?
Yeah, from what I, um, understand, I, I thought it was 12 feet from what, um, Mark Colbach from Kemper had emailed. Um, we had put from the road, they had put 18 feet. By doing so, um, essentially, from what Kemper Associates said, it has flow, I guess the garage doesn't get too close to the home, um, in kind of, you know, the way the property should flow, essentially. Um, but that's what he put, was 18 feet. We intend- I guess the garage doesn't get too close to the home, um, and kind of, you know, the way the property should flow essentially. Um, but that's what he put was 18 feet. We intended again, uh, to have maybe a locust fence to match the neighborhood and uh, heavy landscaping or landscaping, obviously. The landscaping would cover up the garage from the road, and it would continue up to the current driveway, um, more so to uh, you know, just cover the, the kids when they're playing and what have you from, you know, people going around the neighborhood. We just, weird as it sounds, we just don't feel quite safe anymore with the, the volume of theft and break-ins uh, within houses from this house, so.
And um, you're, you're seeking not only to, uh, I, I think the current setback for, you're, you're in our, you're in our 20s zone, is that correct?
Yes, yep.
Which I understand the front setback is the same as in R12. Would that be, um, Shannon, 30 feet would be the normal setback?
Uh, yeah.
30, okay. And you want a variance of 25 feet, so you're five feet from the property line in the front, correct?
Yeah, and I think the normal setback is 25.
Or, uh, John, the art for R20, the front yard setback is 40 feet.
It's 40? Okay.
R, R20, it's a 40-foot setback for the principal home, but this is a detached structure.
And so what's the setback under the regs? Cause I couldn't figure that out when I looked, because article-
Because it's part of the accessory structure and it's supposed to be behind the longest rear wall of the home.
Longest rear wall.
Correct.
Right, so this-
All accessory structures are supposed to be behind the home.
Okay, so that doesn't even apply, right? I mean, the variance would be to, as I understand it then, is to set aside the zoning regulations completely to allow this structure. Is that my understanding that the regs don't actually permit this? I mean, don't even discuss this uh, accessory uh, structure in the front yard by the road in the first place? Is that, I, that's what I'm confused.
Yeah, it needs more than one grievance.
So they-
The grievance, I'm sorry, variance.
They, the way this is worded, it says, "Shall be located behind the longest rear," so any accessory structure, which this is, shall be located behind the longest rear wall of the principal building or in the rear half of a lot containing frontage on one street.
Okay. Um, my, then my question is, does it also, from the proposed site plan, indicate that you're also seeking a side yard setback to five feet from, I guess it would be 10? Or am I incorrect about that as well?
Uh, that's incorrect. The side yard setback normally is five feet, um, from what Kemper Associates had sent. So they wanted to keep the garage at five, at, keep the side yard setback and only go for the hardship of the, you know, meaning we cannot, there's no physical way to have this in the back or side. So the only variance, he said, would then be the front and, um, but it should be within the normal setbacks for the side.
And, and I just wanted to confirm, Shannon, with you, that that is, in fact, because I note that the uh, on paragraph three of your memo, you note that the, it was a 2017 variance that reduced the side yard setback from 10 feet to five feet. Why, and that I assume was on the right, on the, the other side of the house? Yeah.
It's two different, so the principal, the principal structure-
Yes.
Has to adhere to your, your principal setback table, okay? So your main structure is for your, your, your setback tables for your principal buildings for each of the zones. And so for R20, for the principal home and all, all parts physically connected to it, uh, it has a front of 40, a side of 10 feet for one, 30 for both, and a rear yard of 25. As soon as the structure is detached, it becomes an accessory structure for residential. And the accessory structures have different setbacks. The first being that it's supposed to be behind the rear wall of the home.
Which regulation is that? Because I, I, I'm wondering-
Article 4, Section 2 is our accessory structure reg.
Just have a moment.
And then with that, when presuming it's behind the rear yard of the longest rear wall of the building, then the setbacks apply for five feet from the side and rear lot lines for accessory, for accessory structures.
And I noticed that that, I'm looking at Section 2, it also says that height of the structure shall not exceed 15 feet, but from what I understand, the median height is already 14 feet 9 inches, so it's well above that as well. So I'm, to be honest with you, I'm not even sure what, how many ways this is being asked to um, variant, to create a variance for section under Section 2.
Can I comment on the height we measure to, with a, uh, with a, a traditional peak roof? You measure to the midpoint of the roof.
Oh, you do?
Our, our height, yes. It's not measured to the peak. So that's, um, under definition, there's building height, and it shows where the height is measured to depending upon the style of roof that is presented. And when it is a, a traditional uh, peak roof, then you measure to the midpoint for the height.
Okay, that does, that helps. And then what is the square footage then of this uh, garage total?
Um, Mr. Sho- uh, Shoehorn too, uh, the, I found out the height of the garage is 20 feet 2 inches at the very peak. And then the midpoint is um, what they were supposed to follow, which I believe was 14'9".
Okay.
Uh, the garage exterior to exterior is a 24 by 24 garage. Um, Mr. Kemper thought it was, you know, the, I guess minimal size for two doors to pull in, pull out, whatever it may be, or standard. Um, I believe that's slightly smaller than the current, you know, that were essentially the same that they had built onto the original house.
And, and I'm noting that um, the, uh, so how many square, I mean, I'll have to figure out that, that square-
576, John.
576, I think 24 by 24, but that's exterior as well, so I believe that's exterior if I'm correct. But either way, 24 by 24 would be the footprint.
Okay. And if you add the staircase, does that require any exterior structure, self-standing structure? Does, do you have to include the, the stairs as part of the footprint or no?
I, typically I would say no, even if we did, though, it wouldn't hit the 700 square feet.
Okay.
Yeah, so you, you're nowhere near that 700 square foot, even with the stairs.
All right. Um, Shannon, could you pull up, pull up the photograph of the full front of the house that I, that I submitted?
Uh, sure, I can, yep.
I just want to ask a couple of questions about that.
Is that the one?
Yeah, this is, no, this is, this is the one. This is your house, correct, Mr.?
Y- yes, sir, yep.
Is it Gupta or Gupta?
Uh, Gupta.
Gupta, all right. So as I understand it, the um, the garage that currently exists is the one we see with the two cars in the driveway-
Yes.
-as it now stands, correct?
Yeah.
And you want, and you want to put the, the uh, self-standing garage to the left of your house, near that stockade fence, is that right?
Yes, sir, yep.
Okay, but it would be closer to the road than the entire house, right? In other words-
Yes.
It would be, like I said, the road doesn't, is not the edge of your property. You have to go in a few feet from there, but-
Right.
The area would be uh, to the left there with the side, as I understand it-
Yes.
Of the garage facing the road. In other words, the apex or point would, would be what's facing the road. It would be perpendicular to the road.
Exactly, just like included on uh, 40 Wood Pond and 52 Wood Pond and 215 Tungus.
And you sent us, and you sent us those pictures. I want to thank you for that. But aren't all of those houses in West Hartford?
They, I don't know if Tungus is in West Hartford, but um, what's unique about our street and this lake or the, the Wood Pond as well as Woodridge Lake, the homes are, kind of seem to be hodgepodge, so meaning it could be West Hartford, then for, you know, a strip of Farmington and it changes to West Hartford. What I was including in that is to, to show what follows suit, you know, in this neighborhood, meaning-
Yeah, but we don't, do we know whether West Hartford's uh, zoning regulations are the same as Farmington? Cause I don't.
Um, I'm not sure. I'm just saying, in this case, it is very relative because it's one body of water. And um, it's, you know, it's not uh, out of the ordinary or out of the, the, you know, the neighborhood at all. So, you know, that's all, I, I see, you know, and I do understand that these couple might be uh, in another town, but it's, it's literally, um, one is three houses down and the other one is five or six. I don't know which one. Um, we are in Farmington. Our mail is addressed to West Hartford, for some reason.
Is, is you're the last house in uh, in Farmington or is your direct neighbor to your?
We have two houses. It's us and then two houses. Um, so we're the third house into Farmington. Um, 40 Wood, no, I think 52 Wood Pond would be the first house in West Hartford. And that's uh, one of them that has, you know, the garage in the front as well as a couple houses down, um, you know, on and on.
Rob, Rob Phillips, uh, just a point of clarification. Any uh, town regulations are going to stop at the town line?
What was that, Rob? It was a little bit echoey.
Yeah, I, I, I can't, I don't understand what the problem is, but any uh, town regulations are going to end at the town line. So anything that applies for West Hartford is, is not going to apply in Farmington, vice versa.
Yeah, yeah, yep, yes, sir. And I think it was presented to West Hartford as well, and there was no comment or opposition.
Right, good. And I, so if we can go back to um, the second photograph that I submitted, the one that's more of a close-up of the area, Shannon?
Sure, John.
All right, so I, you know, you have this, per, per point of reference, uh, there were some orange stakes that I saw on your popular uh, flags. Was that the uh, the footprint of the garage that you were contemplating?
Oh, sorry. Uh, no, that was um, I was just putting grass seed down and the lawn company wanted to know where the sprinkler heads were, so, you know, they didn't damage it.
Oh, okay, all right. So as I understand it, looking back, um, your, this garage would be, would, would start somewhere around where that uh, branch of leaves, the dead leaves is sitting there and would go back towards the fence to the left of this photograph. Am I kind of correct? This would be-
Yeah.
The photo, the photo Wood Pond 2 JPG picture that I'm showing.
Um, yeah, I mean, it's with these cam, you know, essentially it would be, it would be blocking, yeah, it would be right there, and um, whether it starts, I don't know because, you know, uh, the angle that it's taken. From the elevations that um, Mr. Kemper provided, uh, the front of the garage would be, you know, uh, right by the front of that sunroom essentially. So maybe those, you know, if we're looking at a dead-on like this, obviously you could see the house is tilting to the side. So in reality, maybe that leaves would be, you know, a few feet closer to the sunroom. Um, but I think the elevations as well as the aerial from the site plan could, you know, show exactly how it would line up, um, you know, uh, if you're looking at it straight on or right from above.
And, and the room that is the smaller windows there, the smaller part there, is that like a breezeway or a family room extension that we're looking at? It looks wider than the other part of the house. I'm just-
Yep, no, that's actually small. It's, it was original, so we kept again this colonial, everything original. And then what we did was expand the side and backs to try to keep the neighborhood feel, et cetera. So that is a four-season um, music room currently, but basically a sunroom.
Okay, and you didn't contemplate trying to attach the house on, to there and have the garage come out maybe on an L from the, from that room, did you?
Um, it would, it just wouldn't really work, you know, like, meaning it just uh, it would create like a masterpiece and it turned into something weird, so.
Okay, all right. And um, do you know if, on the Farmington side of your property going, um, as I understand it, would be in a westerly direction on Wood Pond Road? Um, do any of the houses in your immediate area there, as you go around the curve there, have four garage bays on the Farmington side, not the West Hartford side?
Uh, four there. I know the 215 Tungus, I don't know if that's West Hartford or Farmington. I honestly don't. It's at the very top of the road. That has four, at least. All of these homes that we, the three that we showed definitely have four. I know, uh, I think 88, my neighbor directly to the side, he has like four or three or, you enter through the front, but there's the double stacked or some, something along those lines. So maybe it's like a, a weird three or four, and um, there are homes that all have three. You know, um, three-car garage, you know, so there are, so I guess the answer is along the lake, there's detached with four. I don't know if there's anything with five. There might very well be. A lot of these properties are private. Um, and then there's plenty that have three, and then obviously, what's that?
And, and the, um, the 2017 variances, the one was, did you add on the garages that are on the side there now? Were they the subject of the variance? I don't recall. I think I'm, I think I was on the board in 2017. I don't recall.
Uh, what it was, there was that, the, actually, if you look at that survey, that might be an easy way to do it. So below, if you go one, two pages, there you go. If you center that-
Yeah.
Uh, the, it says, "Two-story frame residence," and it's framed, uh, around the border, it's got the hashed, the hash marks?
Yes.
That was, where you're outlining was the original home, and then there was a detached two-car garage, which is south of that, south, to the right, which was a detached garage.
Right.
What we ended up doing, um, and this, the whole house was dilapidated. This property was abandoned uh, for a decade, 15 years plus, on and on. Um, so what we did was, that garage we removed, and we simply moved the, it's not, almost the same size, 24 by 24, whatever they built, forward and flushed it to the pre-existing colonial. By doing so, that corner moved into variance. That was the only, well, that and the size of the home were the variance. That corner moved into variance in which, you know, we got approval from our neighbor, the Rosadis, who also gave approval for the, you know, the new garage in the front. Um, and then that was the subject of, of just the variance was the, that front corner.
And, and is the part behind the original structure that says, "Proposed addition," I mean, you can't see it from the street, but was that also built, both behind the garage and that large rectangle?
Yes, sir.
That you see there? That's, that's there now. It's all part of it.
Yeah, everything is, uh, the hashtags are gone, and so it's all one continuous structure. Two-car, two-car garage in front, there's a den behind. Um, and then that rectangle behind the main old residence uh, became a, a heating kitchen, so.
Okay, and that, so then, there's the, just have a moment.
Can we move along?
Yeah, I have a couple more questions here. Um, could you just tell me a little bit more about this hardship of crime? Because quite frankly, I've never heard of that before, so explain to me how that constitutes a hardship for you.
Well, our hardship is not really the crime. The hardship is that we do not have, you know, a physical place to place our garage. A prime hardship, meaning if we did want to have an accessory structure, we cannot put it into the backyard because we're into wetlands then. Um, so the main hardship is that. Now, us living here, it's, it just, that, you know, it happens to be that it's a very high-crime area, shockingly enough. Like I said, um, at 65 Wood Pond, directly across the street, they literally broke into their car, entered their house, stole another car. It's little, it's crazy. So for us, um, that and then-
But I'm more interested, why is this a hardship to you and not to every other person who wants to add garages? Because there's people breaking into their cars, is my question.
No, 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 that's not the hardship. The hardship is that, you know, to this lot, as Sandy had outlined prior, is there is no place to put the garage because um, the lot and the way the lot falls.
And you can't use your current garages for your cars?
What I was saying is, we are currently using them as much as we can. We have children. They're very high-end athletes, so our, our garage is filled with sports stuff. But outside of that, um, Jennifer's mother lives in Philadelphia. She's elderly. She can't move around too well. COVID's going on. We want her to live with us, but she has a vehicle, so ultimately, the vehicle has to go somewhere. And ultimately, it's just sketchy. It's unbelievably sketchy on the street. So um, I just don't, I don't feel safe, you know, having, I mean, I, I, they can live with us, obviously, no matter what, we're landscaping the front because I don't want people walking by our house anymore. And um, ultimately, it just makes it very difficult for them, you know, for her to have a car. If my parents come- for them, you know, for her to have a car. If my parents come, I just don't want to leave stuff out on the driveway. One day, my, when my kids get a little older, they, we may get a third vehicle. And with that as well, it's just, it's insane. We, I know of four cars being stolen within, you know, houses from my house. And that's because I know those people. Meaning I have no idea what police reports are happening. This is just neighbors being like, dude, my car was stolen, you know, on and on. So meaning for us, we just need a secondary garage for our parents, period. You know, if it wasn't, you know, if that's just the case, we have nowhere, I would gladly build it in the back, sir, if I could. We just don't have a place to do that because of the hill as well as the zone for the wetlands.
And my last question, other than your personal talking to some neighbors, this is what I would call anecdotal evidence. You haven't produced any police reports to show that this is a rash of crime, that it isn't maybe a kid in the neighborhood doing all this. In other words.
Police reports, there's their full stolen vehicle. So I didn't think we'd have to, but we could easily email the, the ones that we know of, the one that just happened to 65 Wood Pond on Thursday. The police are right there. Car stolen. So I don't, it cannot be kids. It has to be organized crime if, or maybe it's just random, but it's shocking the volume of cars stolen. 51 Wood Pond, their car was stolen. Helen Andress, 57 Wood with Circle, Mr. John Gallagher, his car was stolen twice, once that we've been living here. He's a University of Hartford D1 coach. His daughter plays with athletics with us. So we're aware when we moved of that. So that's the only thing that I know. But I'm sure, sir, there's definitely police reports because it's not Mickey Mouse, you know, little stuff being stolen. It's actual.
No, but I appreciate that and I'm concerned about mine too. So thank you. Thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you for your time.
I think we would, John Brockman and Steve Walsh have already participated?
Yep. So you could go to Harry Marsh because Harry did, and I'll make sure Harry.
Make sure, I was going to go to Harry. So will we use everybody if you're still on?
I do not see Harry. I think Harry has decided.
Yeah, yeah.
He was finished for.
Okay, switch back to John Brockman then?
Uh, yeah. And again, both gentlemen. I'm sorry, John, I talked over you. One more time.
That's okay. Nothing for me. I'm fine.
I don't have any questions in addition to those that have already been asked.
Okay.
Therefore, we will move on to comments from the public. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to the application? Please raise your hand virtually.
There is no one logged in, any logged in.
All right. The public portion of the meeting therefore is concluded. Let's see, we will need a motion. And again, it must be stated in the affirmative.
I can do it if you want. As an alternate, if I can?
Sure.
Okay. I move to approve the application of Niraj and Jennifer Gupta for a variance to locate a detached garage in other than a required yard at 70 Wood Pond Road in an R20 zone.
Is there a second?
I'll second. This is Sarah.
Discussion.
Discussion. Do we need to go in order again? I guess we do. I'll go last again. John Carrier.
Uh, yeah. I, I'm thinking that this garage is just too close to the road. I mean, after looking at the last application and, you know, 30 plus another 18 feet or so, and I understand it's a hardship, but I also pulled up the GIS and look at the wetlands and they don't go right up to the house. So there is opportunity to add a shed for storage, et cetera. I just, I just don't see the, the undue hardship here for having a garage in that front yard.
Sarah Nadine.
Um, I don't have anything to add right now.
Thank you. Rob Phillips, anything to add?
Yeah, I was on site today and it seems awfully close to the roadway. I'm not sure if there's not, if there's any more room anywhere else in the lot because of the way the vegetation is, is set up. And I'm not quite sure yet. That's only, that's the only comments I have. I'd like to hear everybody else's.
John Shawhorn, discussion as opposed to the questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just going to agree with what Commissioner Carrier indicated. I believe it's too close to the road. And although I respect the fact that there are some issues with car break-ins and whatnot, I can't find as a matter of, of, of statutory authority that that would constitute the kind of hardship that would allow a permanent change to this property. I also appreciate the fact that the Guptas would like to have their, either parents or in-laws stay with them and they're going to bring a car or two. But I think it's important just to note that the variance goes with the property, not with the personal issues and hardships of individual landowners. So that's my only comment.
That's an issue that came up with regard to the property on Eli. Remember the doctor's residence?
Oh, yeah. Wanted the variance for the pool, right?
That's right.
So I do think we need to demonstrate some consistency, but I'm sorry, John Brockman, any comments in addition to those already made?
No, nothing for me.
All right, that cycles back to me again. I've got issues here with the substantial hardship and with consistency with the prior decision that I just mentioned. Subject to that, are there any, is there any further discussion regarding the motion? There's, here we go, further discussions. We can then proceed to a vote. We will do it via roll call. Again, I'll go last. And again, the motion was in the affirmative. Commissioner Carrier?
Nay.
Nadine?
Nay.
Phillips?
Nay.
Shawhorn?
No.
Brockman?
Nay.
Callahan, nay.
Good.
The motion fails.
Yep.
Last item on the agenda for this evening is the approval of the July 13, 2020 ZDA meeting. May I have a motion?
Are we allowed to comment at all? Or, oh, fine. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yep. You're welcome to.
Okay.
The, the application did not pass. So that's, that is it with respect to this commission.
Yep. My only question was if this was moved further from the front yard, encroaching onto the house, and if it was shrunken down or the same, well, it'd have to be, I think. I don't even know if it's a possibility, but if it came to, towards the 25-foot setback off the road, would that suffice?
I, I don't think we can answer that hypothetically.
Yeah. I, you, you, I would suggest you go back, you can share the meeting notes when they're prepared and share them with your consultant and talk to your consultant. And I'm happy to discuss this with you further, you know, tomorrow or the next day. But the commission really can't opine on hypotheticals at this particular point.
I just wanted to final note that I think Mr. Carrier had said it could go in the backyard. There is secondary to the hill. It just cannot go in the backyard and you would block, if, if it was even possible, we were told it was not. And if it even was.
So the hearing is closed. The matter has been voted on. So there are no further comments. We need to move on with our other business this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
So with regard to the minutes, I would move that the, the commission approve the minutes with the amendment that I submitted on July 22, 2020, that was shared, I think, with members of the board.
It was.
Yeah.
Can we have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. And then it just briefly, is there any questions regarding the updates I provided on 1179 or 21 Poplar Hill? If there's none, that's fine. They were in the agenda review. If they are self-explanatory from the agenda review, that's fine.
Shannon, I do have one question about 21 Poplar Hill. Have you received any response from the property owner?
I, yes, he was not pleased.
Why? Meant in terms of an application or something like that?
No. Nope. I, he's, we exchanged emails and he expressed his displeasure in his email and there's been nothing further.
All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Thank you very much.